Good evening. Welcome to the Vineland Board of Education final meeting for the year of 2020, December 9, 5:00 p.m. start. Roll call, please. Mr. Merkley.
Mr. Costa.
Here.
Mrs. Cottisbody.
Present.
Mr. Fioki.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Sabrana.
Present.
Mr. Silva.
Here.
Ms. Spinelli.
Here.
Mr. Ulrich. Mr. English.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Merkley. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time and place thereof, agenda, etc. The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Nuestra Comunidad, Visto Bueno, The Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. At this time, I would ask that everyone please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Merkley, do we have a resolution for executive session this evening?
No, we do not.
Okay, moving right along. Dr. Grucchio, do we have any special presentations this evening?
We do. We have one, but if I could just take a moment before we do that, I wanted to just mention that we received a donation from Donors Choose for our music room at the high school, and they donated a Casio mini personal keyboard, so we want to thank them for that. And I also want to acknowledge Shirley Santos. Shirley was recognized as an educator who is valued by their school and community, and someone who has exhibited strong knowledge and skills, an inspiring presence, and a clear vision for quality teaching and learning. There are only 93 educators across the whole state who received that recognition, so I wanted to just take a moment to congratulate Shirley. We're happy to have her as one of our teachers. And then our presentation this evening is from Complete Care. We're very excited to have them at our high school now. And Mr. Curtis Edwards is with us this evening. I'd like to call him forward for the presentation.
All right, good evening, everyone. Is this mic hot? No, I said, "Good evening." I didn't hear anyone. I got a little nervous. I thought maybe it wasn't working.
Good evening.
All right, James Edwards, 25 Dare Avenue, Bridgeton, New Jersey. First of all, thank you to the Bridgetton Vineland Board of Education. You know, I'm getting confused because I'm on city council in Bridgeton, so I'm so used to saying Bridgeton things, but I'm glad to be here, you know, with our partnership. And with me, I have Richie Elwell, who's my executive VP for Operations and Business. You know, just in case there's some questions that, you know, I may have to push over to Richie. So, thank you to Mr. President, you know, Dr. Grucchio, and fellow Vineland Board of Education members. You know, this is an opportunity for me to share some information about the organization I've been with for 17 years. You know, that's a long time. But as I said, I've been on the Bridgeton Board of Education for nine, Bridgeton City Council for six, and, you know, today, I understand and appreciate your concerns as far as presentations, so I promise it will not be an hour presentation. So here's a quick glimpse of Complete Care Health Network. We were founded in 1973, and for all that don't know, I was, I believe, not even born yet, so of course, that was negative two. We was actually founded by Inspira Health Network now, but they were known as South Jersey Hospital Systems at the time. As a department in the hospital, we were there to care for the indigent and migrant populations. So since then, you know, 43 years later, 44, 45, we've got 20 locations throughout three counties, Cumberland, Gloucester, and Cape May Counties. We serve 63,000 patients for over 200,000 visits, and we're designated as a community and migrant health center. So there's two other designations we can reach out for if we wanted to. That would be affordable housing and homeless, and we have not. We just stick in with the two. So just as you look at the 20 locations, we do have five locations located inside of schools at the moment, and we have one site located inside of ShopRite, right down the street, and all the rest are freestanding. Our mission at Complete Care is simple. It's to improve lives by providing a convenient, comprehensive, high-quality health care to every person and every community we serve. I mean, I think that's a statement that needs to be said. We don't just concentrate on individuals that don't have insurance, the migrant population. We reach out to everyone. And as you can see with our values, you know, we want to provide accessible, affordable, high-quality, culturally diverse health care. So the next couple of slides are just going to give you some pictures of our executive leadership and our board of directors. I know you may notice some of the individuals because the makeup of our board is the makeup of our patients and, of course, our population. You may know some of these people. Now here's the board. Now what's important about our board of directors is to be an FQHC, which we are a federally qualified health center. Fifty-one percent of your board have to be users of the health center. Means that they have to utilize the services, so that helps me at our board meetings when, you know, they actually utilize the sites. They come back and give you that feedback that you normally wouldn't have from your normal board of directors. So of course, our board chairs, Jack Serenzi, you know, Arthur Horn, Maria La Boy, and of course, the Honorable Demetrika Todd Ruiz. Some of our board members, Dr. Baftas, Victor Cruz, Paul Cooper, Beverly Darasaw, Dosé Gomez, Sandra Rodriguez, James Quinn, James Rambo. And we have a 13-member board, so we do have one vacancy at the moment. That was 12, you know, so we are looking for board members. This is our service area. There's an FQHC in every county in the state of New Jersey. You know, we're allowed to only go into three, and that's Cumberland, Gloucester, and Cape May County. So you can see by the stars, we have three health centers located in Gloucester County, 15 in Cumberland, which are five or school-based health centers, and two in Cape May County. And you might ask yourself, what makes us different than your normal doctor's office? You know, and it's simple. We have to see everybody that walks through our doors. I mean, we're not allowed to turn anyone away because of, you know, their income, family size, race, anything. We have to see everyone that walks through Complete Care doors, and that's what really makes us different than all the other providers. So services offered. We offer a lot. Primary care, adult and family medicine, pediatrics, dental, women's health, podiatry, chiro, dermatology, infectious disease, psychiatrists, counseling service, addiction services, eye care, internal medicine, hematology, and nephrology. And what you'll find at most practices in the state of New Jersey, you know, they don't offer the specialty services, but that was something that at Complete Care, we wanted to, you know, match the name, make everything complete. So at most of our locations, we try to offer, if you can't get it at one of the sites you come to, and throughout our network, you'll have access to those services. So I'm going to ask Richie to come up to speak a little bit about the Vineland High School location, which is in the Tarrina Building, you know, just because, you know, we appreciate, you know, all the leadership that was involved to make this happen, because as you may know or may not have heard, earlier in the year, there was, you know, school-based funding was basically cut from the governor's budget. You know, so all of our school-based sites was in jeopardy of shutting down, but because of advocacy, it didn't. And there was money put back into the governor's budget to allow our health centers to still run. But this one is different, because this was dollars, you know, that Complete Care invested back into the community to have this school here. So Richie, if you can come up and talk a little bit about the high school, the services, and some of the, you know, the billing information that I know is a concern of some of the board members.
All right, good evening. I'm Richie Elwell, the Executive Vice President for Business and Operations at Complete Care Health Network. We'd like to thank Superintendent Grucchio, Assistant Superintendent Frye, Gene Merkley, Business Administrator, for working with us on this, along with the nurses who have provided us with a lot of guidance and feedback and helped us really structure this, so that it could be a fantastic and wonderful opportunity for all the youth in the School District of Vineland Public Schools. So we did open in November. We then quickly closed in November, but we look to reopen again once everything launches. We are looking to see children of all ages from all the schools. We're going to work that in as demand and time allow, but we strictly are going to focus, initially here, we really want to focus on those youth at the high school to make sure that they have access to the care they need in the buildings that they attend. We're going to provide services via a nurse practitioner. We'll be open to mirror the school hours from 7:30 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon. Walk-ins are always encouraged as we partner with the school nurses and other folks in the building to make sure that we can meet the care when it is needed and not push that off a day or a week. We will also schedule visits, so if we have youth coming in and they have chronic diseases and things that need to have ongoing checks, we can take care of that within the building, again with a focus on reducing absenteeism or time out of class, so we can take care of what is needed and get the youth back into class. And our goal is to expand services to all staff in 2021 to make sure that care is accessible to anyone throughout the district. This is Martha Alvarez, our nurse practitioner. She has been with us for, I think, about 30 years now. Martha's story is that she started as a licensed practical nurse, became a registered nurse, went back to school again to become a provider, and became an advanced practice nurse practitioner. So here are the services we're looking to provide. We really want to hit that primary care piece, because we know there is an absence of it in the community. And a lot of times, that's not based on providers not being accessible. Sometimes it's based on family restrictions. We have parents who work a couple of jobs, and they can't get to the care that they need for their children. So we want to place that in there, so that primary care model is available. Sports physicals, we want to make sure that the youth have the opportunity to receive those physicals, so that they can be engaged in after-school activities and other items that keep them in a safe surrounding and give them positive things to do with their afternoon. We do know that the areas or the times between 3:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. is when most youth tend to get in trouble with the police, so if we can help them take advantage of the opportunities within the district, extracurriculars, then we can help in that area as well. Immunizations, sick and well visits, obviously more, we wanted to put up here. We're not providing condoms. We know that in other districts where we came in, that that was a pain point for some folks. We never offered them. We want to make sure that we're respecting everybody's rules and regulations. We're not encouraging any undue behavior, but we are there for the discussions. There will be no co-pay required for the youth. So if somebody does have a private insurance plan, and there is typically a $20 co-pay, we have learned over the years, we've never collected co-pays, but we know that if we give a kid $20 and send them to school, that money's not going to make it to the office, right? It's going to hit the corner store on the way. It's going to be used in a lunchroom or something else. We just waive those. That way, there is no additional barrier here. We will bill insurances for the services provided by the nurse practitioner. If it's something simple, it requires a Band-Aid, or something that doesn't rise to the level of a nurse practitioner, if it could be handled by a school nurse, we're going to treat it as a school nurse visit, and we're not going to bill insurances for those items. Anything that do rise to the level of nurse practitioner licensure, we will bill, and assigned consent is required for care. Some of the bonuses of Complete Care working with the district and the youth is that for youth who do not have some sort of primary payer, we can link the parents with our access to care counselors. And the goal here is to get them signed up for Medicaid or some other program, so that not only are the visits provided within the school covered, but we can get the children covered for dental care. They can have their prescriptions covered. Should something terrible happen and youth ends up in the hospital for some reason, then that would be covered, too. We can protect the parents and the communities against some of these medical bankruptcies we see occurring across the country. We will see that we have access to reduced-cost medications through our special program. It's a 340B pharmacy program. And so for folks who are uninsured, we're able to get them medications at a significantly discounted rate. The only folks who pay less for the medications would be the VA. Other than that, federally qualified health centers have the next dibs on that next level of pricing, and we pass that pricing on to the consumer. We have access to our patient portal, so that means that parents, they sign up, they can have access to their child's records, so they can print out any school physicals, any immunization records that are needed. They can do that at home, and then that way, it is at their convenience. Their data are theirs. They own it, and they have access to it. We also have that connection to our medical records, so if we see one of the children in the building, and then they need to go to our Sherman Avenue facility or another facility, we still have access to that record, so the care is continuous across the network. And so this slide would be questions. If there's anything that I wasn't clear on or mumbled too much about, this would be a good time to call me out on that. Sure.
First and foremost, I'd like to welcome Complete Care, and also thank you for investing and partnering with the Vineland Public School District. As you know, being a school board, past school board member, the students need a lot, especially in Cumberland County, so I anticipate it being a great partnership, and would like to thank you. It's also good to see things like, hear and see things, no co-pay required, immunizations. We see everyone. That's refreshing, because that's what our community's been crying for for some time. With the COVID-19 pandemic in place, will there be anything in place as far as testing our students when we go back to school, testing our staff? Is that something we're looking into, or something we're not going to be doing?
Now, of course, we're open to anything. At the moment, we haven't looked into the testing process here in the school district, but we are like a big partner of the Cumberland County Health Department. I know Vineland has their own health department, so they're sort of, you know, we have to have those discussions, but at the moment, you know, we do have a lot of relationships with a lot of the different health departments to do the testing. So it's something we can explore, but we haven't explored anything in the Vineland School District at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Do any of my fellow board members have any questions or comments? Ms. Cottisbody.
I'd just like to thank you for coming, and I'm really impressed as to seeing what the program is actually going to entail. As Mr. English said earlier, I'm happy to see that all the students are going to be able to have some, you know, be able to take part or have medical treatment if needed, or go to see a nurse practitioner. So, as you know, in Cumberland County, it's hard, so thank you for doing this, and thank you for coming into our district, because I really appreciate it for our citizens and our students.
You're so welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Cottisbody. Ms. Costa.
Thank you so much for coming. I love the presentation, and obviously, this is a wonderful, wonderful concept, and the implementation was great for all our students. Now, I just have a question. With respect to, let's say, a child comes in, or, you know, one of the high school students, and their nurse practitioner diagnoses them with, say, strep throat, will they be able to write out prescriptions for them? How is that going to work?
Well, of course, the nurse practitioner there is licensed to write scripts, so definitely.
Okay, so then...
It's as if she went to the doctor's office. I mean, that's what the nurse practitioner is. If you went to our site, you would either see a physician or a nurse practitioner, and they all have the rights to write scripts.
Okay, so they'd be able to, so the students will be able to get the scripts, and then they could potentially go to the pharmacy that you described?
Correct. So we have a system, so if there's something on file, and if we're in communication with the parents, we'd be able to send the script right to the pharmacy, and when they get it out, they can go pick it up, and just like from the doctor's office.
Great, thank you.
Try to make it easy.
I'd like to thank you, gentlemen, for taking the time to come and share this presentation. We're very excited about the facility. It's beautiful, and we're looking forward to a long, continued partnership, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you again, guys. Happy holidays. Dr. Grucchio, just a quick question. On our website, maybe we can mimic that kind of PowerPoint. I don't know if we can do something like that, just so the public can see something run. That would be great. Thank you. And that is it for presentations this evening, correct? Thank you. Any questions or comments on our HIB report this evening? Seeing none. At this time, do I have a motion for the approval of minutes, November 11, 2020, combined meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa.
Abstain.
Mrs. Cottisbody.
Yes.
Mr. Fioki.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli. Mr. English.
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any committee reports or summaries this evening? Mr. Fioki.
Yes. The Finance Committee met on December 2 at 4:00 p.m. via Zoom. In attendance was Dr. Grucchio, Mr. Merkley, Mr. Mustrel, Mr. English, Ms. Spinelli, Mr. Holmes, and myself. First, we discussed the 2019-2020 audit completion. This is going to be presented to the board on January 13. Next, we discussed the new healthcare law, Chapter 44, and the significant effect to our current budget and future budgets. Next was end of usefully for the radio communication system. City of Vineland and Board of Education are joining a shared agreement for the new system. Estimated cost is $600,000, and this is currently ongoing. Lastly, we discussed the budget for '21-'22. Process is underway. The board and the administration identified priorities, as well as a plan, tax loving. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fioki, and it was a good meeting for sure. Do we have any other committee summaries this evening? Mr. Holmes.
Yes, the Transportation Committee met Monday, November 23 at 4:00 p.m. here at the board office. We discuss timesheet discussion, department communication, update on COVID protocols, possibility of drivers taking buses home during the day, discussion concerning transportation employees if we close due to COVID, department accountability, use of technology, transportation director, and the lack of substitutes. And that was all.
Two was a good meeting to close the year out with. Do we have any other committee summaries this evening? Okay, seeing none, we are moving on to number eight. Do we have any comments by our board solicitor this evening?
None.
Thank you very much, Mr. DeSanto. Number nine, do we have any public comment on agenda items or any other matter? We will be having only one section for this this evening, and as always, limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Well, I do have four yellow forms, so let me call them in the order I received them. Let's bring up the people who filled out the forms first, and then anyone else who may be in the public can come up. So the first person who can come to the podium will be Tara Meyerson.
Is it right if I close this laptop here? I don't want to mess anyone's stuff up. Is it okay? Is it okay? I'm not sure who's at the... Hi, everyone. My name's Tara Myerson. I am a citizen of Vineland and also a teacher. It feels like home back up here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am here on behalf of our district's secretaries, guidance counselors, social workers, and nurses, and I'm asking you, the Board members, to please reconsider your stance on requiring these professionals to work from the school buildings each day. So in New Jersey, if you watch the Governor's Report, we have close to 5,000 positive COVID cases a day now, almost, and it's very alarming. There were even 91 deaths reported just today. We've gone back to all remote learning. Most teachers and all students are working and learning from the safety of their homes. We followed the numbers, we followed the science, we followed the Health Department, and Dr. Grucci chose to keep the safety of teachers and students in mind. But why do many Board members feel that not every staff member is entitled to that same sense of safety? Why are our secretaries, nurses, social workers, and guidance counselors exempt from being able to protect themselves and their families while working? It makes no sense. What we have heard is that these educational support professionals are needed to assist with parent communication and student advocacy. Yes, this is a very important part of their job, but guess what? With a computer and a telephone, this work can be done virtually safely from home. That makes more sense. And just for the record, working from the safety of home for those in the education profession does not mean hardly working. Unfortunately, it seems to have become a new trend for some to think that we, teachers and ESPs, need to be held accountable or accounted for at all times, making sure that we're doing our job, what it requires. I don't think I need to go any further, but quite frankly, it's a little insulting. We're all working harder than we've ever worked before for our students, and just because we're not in a building does not give anyone the right to assume that we aren't working. So in closing, educational support professionals have come to me many times recently, feeling very disrespected and disregarded for not being given a choice in this matter when teachers are given a choice, as if they'd like to teach from school, buildings, or home. So I hope that you will see that there's unfairness in this requirement, and I really hope that today the Board can reconsider that decision. Thank you very much.
Ms. Myerson, just one second, please. Can you name that four, the four group again, please? Who's in this group?
Oh, nurses, social workers, guidance counselors, and secretaries.
And that's the only four?
Um, from what I know, from what our members that have come to us, I believe, CST as well, CST as well.
Jolly noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person invited to the podium would be Lou Russo.
Good evening, everyone. Lou Russo, 154 Avis Court, Vineland, New Jersey. And I just want to pick up and reiterate what Mrs. Myerson just brought up. So as President, I have received, I can't count them, scores and scores of emails, text messages, and phone calls from guidance counselors, the social workers, nurses, and secretaries who can't understand why their lives essentially are not deemed as important. They don't understand why they have to be placed in greater risk. So I'm asking you to consider those folks. I've made a suggestion that if some of those personnel were required to report, that we consider rotating them in and out so we lessen the density of people that report in a school at any given day. I think that might still be under discussion, I don't know, but we hope that it is. It's also important to keep in mind, child study teams work out of common offices, and we can tell people a thousand times to socially distance, but when people report to work, they tend to behave and work normally. So we have cases of COVID transmission among child study team members. At least two teams have been affected, as far as I'm aware, one of them very recently. And we also have cases among our secretarial members. They work in close proximity, is much, or if not more than anyone, and they are the folks that I'm most concerned about. You know, as a teacher, I can work in isolation, and I thank you for giving us the opportunity to do that safely. I just believe that we should try to give that opportunity to every employee in the school district. The case numbers are skyrocketing. We know that community transmission is out there, but we now have school-based transmission, and I'm hoping that we can stop that before it gets out of control. Already, we have counties to our north and counties to our south where there are no ICU beds available. Cape May County doesn't have ICU beds. They're running critically short. We can't wait until it gets to that point because by then it's too late. We don't want anyone to spend their Christmas in the hospital, their Christmas ill with COVID, and we can proactively do our part to prevent that. So I just respectfully ask you all to use your positions and, you know, consider that point. Thank you so much. Have a great evening and happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Russo.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christopher Mohan. I teach in the South Building. I teach English, and I just wanted to share something on a more positive note. In spite of all of the hardships that we've had to face because of COVID...
I'm sorry, but I can't hear you. Can you speak a little closer? Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Groovy. Okay, so in spite of all the hardships with COVID, and as distant as we have been because of COVID, there have been ways that we've actually been able to build community. Because of Google Meets, I've been able to meet with students who are typically very shy and would not come out of their shell otherwise, so it's been nice to work with some students that way. Also, I'm on the Board of Trustees at Silom Cemetery, and this past summer, I've cleaned over 750 tombstones, not alone. I've actually had some students from Vineland High School come and help, and they've actually earned some of their graduation requirement as the public, where they have to do community service hours, service learning. So I've had a senior and one junior actually come and help out. Jonathan Chu, who's a senior at our high school, has cleaned over 100 stones, and Alexia Ramandi, who is now a junior, has cleaned over 50. I don't think anything like this would have happened if we didn't have COVID in place. So in spite of all of the difficulties, we have found ways to adapt and change and grow and to build community, and educators do that, and I think we sometimes overlook that. I hope the community realizes that. I know you know it, but I hope the community knows just how often teachers will rise to an occasion and do wonderful things for the community it serves. That's all I have to say. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Mohan.
The next individual that filled out a form is Roxanne Durenzis.
Hi, good evening. You can hear me, right? Yes, I feel like I can't hear with a mask. I'm here to say something positive, and it's actually a question, and I do know you cannot answer me now, but it's something like Chris was just saying. I was saying to my teachers, because our virtual teachers are doing such amazing things, and our children are doing amazing things, is there a way or a time at a board meeting publicly, we can show that off, like in a special presentation? There have been teachers that have been asking and saying, could we do a slide presentation? Or can I show up at a board meeting? And I don't know, so I'm going to put that out there to you because you'll be surprised. I have a virtual club, and my students show up 8:00 in the morning in their pajamas, and they're doing amazing things. They're called the Bravo ambassadors, so they're like the superheroes of our school, and we would like to show that off, and we would like to do it here publicly so people can see it. So that's what I'm asking, and eventually, I know you can answer, but not now. Thank you.
That's it for the yellow forms. Does anyone else? This is the only opportunity, from my understanding, that the public will be able to address the Board. If there's anyone else that has any comment regarding anything on the agenda or not on the agenda, they can come up now.
Dr. Grucci, I just want to, I just want to take a moment. I believe probably my fellow Board members and myself might not be aware of this. A couple people spoke tonight at the podium. I did receive a copy, just, I'm not going to, it doesn't matter where the letter came from or who wrote it, but I just want to read it to my fellow Board members. It's to the tune of, "I just wanted to let you know that such-and-such and I are doing our best to have you all work from home. However, Mary is insisting that principals want and need you there. We've argued and argued, and they are budging. If you feel strongly about it, we are asking people to speak at Wednesday's BOE meeting, then need to hear how you really feel..." I'm sorry, "they" need to know how you really feel, how you can do the same job while at home, yada, yada. I just, I want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. Dr. Grucci, this is day-to-day operations, correct? I don't believe that, Board members have publicly stated, previous board meetings, that if we have the proper PPE in place, if we have all the safety measures in place, we would like to see schools open five days a week. We all knew that this COVID was out there. We understand it. We're all in it every day. I think what's happening here, and it's frustrating on all angles, one office that I would not like to be in right now is Dr. Rossi's office because, yes, I understand we fear COVID, and we are doing the best with it. There's a vaccine on the horizon, and I think the next fear is going to be the fear of getting the vaccine. The one thing we have to continue to stay focused on is our students definitely need to be educated, and I myself, as Board President, along with my fellow Board members, and I'm sure the majority of the educators out there, you cannot replace the face-to-face instruction that our students get, period, end. I think we're doing a phenomenal job with our virtual online piece. We have applauded it. It's not perfect, but it's a lot better than it was when it rolled out in March, and it's a heck of a lot better than other school districts, from what I'm understanding. I don't want it to be a particular union versus the Vineland Board of Education versus central administration. This is a pandemic. We can't find any language in any contract that addresses how to react and recreate the wheel during a pandemic. We are literally doing it on the fly, and I believe we're doing a hell of a job at Everyone has their own opinion here, and there's not going to be anybody happy because there's still that 60% that wants to go or the 40% that don't, or vice versa. I've seen the statistics time and time again. The thing that we have to look at here now is we are closed down until MLK Day, but we all watch the news. It's not going away. There's just as much as you might possibly catch it in a classroom, you can catch it in a supermarket. Again, many people know I'm one of four people in my family that didn't get it. My three other family members had it. Do I fear it? I fear like anything, but it has not stopped my day-to-day action, as I know teachers are doing a great job. This group of secretaries, nurses, paraprofessionals, guidance counselors, child study teams, I think someone said there was a discussion about rotating. To be honest with you, that is Dr. Rossi and Dr. Grucci's area of discussion, if they want to rotate, but I'm not so sure. I can tell you what a secretary can do from home if we don't connect them with a phone system and things like that. I'm not sure what a nurse can do. I mean, I know that a lot of people were nervous about the words "layoff" and, what's the other word? Furloughs. I mean, that's the easy way. We could just lay people off. Who knows what happens? Insurance is pay. We don't want to go that route. We're doing our best to try and keep people employed, but if it comes a time when we have people sitting home that are doing nothing, and don't take it as I'm saying, teachers or anyone, but I can't explain to the taxpayers that put me in this seat to answer the question, are you paying someone to stay home and do nothing? I personally know that the people that are home are doing a lot and more than ever, so we know that here. I just want you to know that I'm speaking on behalf of my Board. This Board has never said, if you are pregnant, if you have an underlying condition, if you are 60 or over, we expect you to be cautious and stay home. We expect that. You know, we're not cold-blooded hardcore people. We are living it just like you are. The important thing here is, it's here, it's going to continue to be here, and I can't have the battle he said, she said, if we can't get in a room and just kind of figure this out. I understand that some people aren't happy because they are coming into work, but we also have security that's coming every day. We have bus drivers. We have maintenance. There's a huge list, central administration, so you have to hear me out here. I applaud the VEA for rallying the troops as that is what they do, but you know, we've been down this road. This isn't anything that's normal, and we will be sitting down soon at the table to start our discussions because never did we think we would need to have the words "pandemic" added to a, to a negotiation strategy, but I guess that's going to be some of our discussion. All I wanted to say is, I need us to all be in the same room and on the same page because we still are the Vineland Public School District. So that's pretty much all I had to say. I was a little afraid that my fellow Board members thought that this might have been something that we had control over, but I wanted you to know that it was day-to-day operations, period. Thank you all on that. At this time, Dr. Grucci, motions and resolutions, please.
I would like to recommend discussion of the following: retirements, resignations, terminations, leaves of absence, employment, transfers, students, substitutes, and extracurricular activities.
Any questions or comments?
I would like to recommend approval of the following: retirements, resignations, terminations, leaves of absence, employment, transfers, students, substitutes, and extracurricular activities.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please, Mr. Merkley.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva? Ms. Spinelli? Mr. English?
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you, Mr. Merkley.
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the second reading of the following policies and regulations or bylaws. They are listed. They're the same ones that were on the last meeting. This is their second reading, so I recommend discussion if anybody has any questions.
Questions or comments?
I recommend approval of the second reading of the following policies, regulations, and/or bylaws.
Roll call, please, Mr. Merkley. I'm sorry, do I have a motion?
Are you going to do them individually?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli? Mr. English?
Yes.
That passes.
Okay, I would like to recommend discussion regarding bus evacuation... Okay, I would like to recommend discussion regarding bus evacuation drills that were completed in November 2020, as per the list provided and on file with the board secretary, and in accordance with New Jersey Administrative Code 6A:27-11.2.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion authorizing the board secretary to enter into an affiliation agreement for the 2021 school year for the placement of students for field internships, student teaching, practicum, and observations with Thomas Jefferson University.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion authorizing the board secretary to enter into an affiliation agreement for the 2021 school year for the placements of students for field internships, student teaching, practicum, and observations with Western Governors University.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend approval of items 2.2 through 2.4.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbadi.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva. Ms. Spinelli. Mr. English.
Yes.
They pass.
I would like to recommend discussion of budgetary transfers for the general school based in ECPA budgets for October 2020.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of the board secretary and treasurer's reports for October 2020.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the placement of special education students.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding submission of the following grant application and acceptance of the funding: Cumberland County Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Service Grant by the Municipal Alliance. This would be for the period October 1, 2020, through June 30, 2021, in the amount of $2,800 for a drug and alcohol-free post-graduation celebration, with the amount to be matched with $700 from the City of the Violin Board of Ed.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the acceptance of the Fiscal Year 2018 Every Student Succeeds Act Title I Audit: The Corrective Action Plan, which is attached.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the submission of the Fiscal Year 2021 Elementary and Secondary Act Application Amendment, which includes carryover funds to the State and New Jersey Department of Education, July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2021. Each allocation is listed.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the cancellation of the List of Checks from Accounts Payable, which is provided and on file with the Secretary of the Board.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the sales of the Vehicle List, which is on file with the board secretary, which will be auctioned off on Gov. deals.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the Cumberland County Homeless Agreement for the 2021 school year for in-district educational services for any resident student determined to be homeless at the time the student enrolls from another Cumberland County district similarly entered into this agreement.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the submission and acceptance of the following grant funding through the New Jersey Department of Ed, Division of Early Childhood Education, for wraparound services enhancement grants for the fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $126,351.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the following: Cumberland County Regional Cooperative Transportation Initiatives, 2021 Quoted Contracts, and 2021 Jointure.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend approval of items 4.1 through 4.11.
Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please, Mr. Merkley.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbadi.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva. Ms. Spinelli. Mr. English.
Yes.
Those motions pass.
Thank you, Mr. Merkley.
That's the end of our recommendations.
Thank you, Dr. Grucci. At this time, we have number 10 of our agenda, proposed items for review or discussion or adoption by board members. Usually, this is a rather easy area for me, but tonight, I'm both happy but sad at the same time. Happy that Dr. Grucci is thinking about retirement, which is a good thing and well-deserved. Sad, because I know what the district is losing in a 46-year dedicated Violin Public School District employee. When you say 46 years, that's a long time, Dr. Grucci. I started doing the math a little bit. It's like two-thirds of your life has been dedicated to the Violin Public School District. Then I'll probably make you feel a little bit old here, but I think that puts me like in fourth grade when you started. Probably Nate was third grade. We were those West Vineland kids, but your legacy, the history that you have set forth here in the Violin Public School District is one that you should be proud of and definitely admirable, for sure. Under this item, it is called Discussion and Approval of a Resolution Accepting the Retirement of Dr. Mary Grucci. Dr. Grucci handed me her letter of retirement last week after we had our agenda setting, and I like to be the tough guy on the outside, but so I'm being tough as she's explaining it to me, and I know it's one of the hardest decisions she's ever had to make, but I support Dr. Grucci on everything that she decides to do. Along the way, I mean, I think I've been the president a long time. When we think about our relationship together, I think I talk to you more than my wife sometimes, but when it comes down to it, you had to make a tough decision, and it was professional, and I know it was hard. So I was the tough guy until I read it a second, third time later in the afternoon and that night, and you had asked me, you know, to keep it between me, and you wanted to personally give a letter to each one of the board members, and you did that this evening. I hope each of them took the time to read it, and it was simply, and it was beautifully stated, and again, true Dr. Grucci fashion with a open-door policy attached to it. On behalf of my colleagues, I really just want to say two simple words, and that's thank you. We'll start the new year in January, and then you'll have six months. For you, it'll probably go by quickly, but with the COVID, who knows? It's going to be another challenging thing, but I just want you to know that you have left a huge mark on this school district, and as I became a board member in 2010, I knew of you, but I didn't know you personally. So I got to grow and know you and become extremely friendly on a friendship-wise setting and the business setting. And let's face it, we both share the biggest passion of all, the passion for our students. And we've had some screaming matches. We've had some Rossini come in and referee a little bit type things, but it was always what we felt was best for our students, and you never wavered when you made your decision. You did say to me, if the board feels differently, that's fine, but you always end our conversations with, "In my heart, this is what I feel is best for our students, and that is what I want to recommend and push forward." I commend you for that, and I thank you for that, as well as your friendship. Dr. Rossi was kind enough to work his words of wisdom and his HR style of putting this resolution that I'm going to read this evening together, and I want to thank Dr. Rossi for that. It states, "City of Violin Board of Education Resolution, December 9, 2020. Whereas Dr. Mary Louise Grucci has served Violin Public Schools with outstanding loyalty and professionalism since 1975; and whereas Dr. Grucci taught for 13 years at Dan Barcy School, Reber, Landis Intermediate, and the Summer Enrichment Program; and whereas Dr. Grucci served as principal at Max Leuchter Elementary School and the Oak and Main Kindergarten Center for 17 years; and whereas Dr. Grucci served as assistant superintendent for seven years before her current nine-year tenure as superintendent of Violin Public Schools; and whereas throughout her long and distinguished service, Dr. Grucci has consistently championed and acted upon her steadfast belief that all children can learn; and whereas Dr. Grucci's omnipresent kindness and generosity is reflected in all that she does to make family, friends, colleagues, and strangers feel warm, welcome, and well-fed in her presence; and whereas Dr. Grucci's selfless contributions to her community are reflected in her many public service leadership roles and the countless episodes of recognition and gratitude she has earned from appreciative organizations throughout the region; and whereas Dr. Grucci in a December 9, 2020, letter indicated her desire to conclude her remarkable, I said remarkable, 46-year career as a Violin Public Schools educator, leader, and mentor. Therefore, be it resolved that the Violin Board of Education hereby accepts with regret the retirement of Dr. Mary L. Grucci as superintendent of schools effective July 1, 2021. Be it further resolved that the board extends its heartfelt appreciation and best wishes to Dr. Grucci for the many well-deserved years and happy and healthy retirement." Thank you, Dr. Grucci. At this time, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbadi.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva. Ms. Spinelli.
Yes.
Mr. English.
Yes.
That passes.
Congratulations early on your retirement, January 1 or July 1, 2021. Thank you. Moving forward with this, I have put Kim Cottisbadi as chair of the new superintendent search. She will be chairing the committee. She has been in contact with school boards, school board rep Jane Kirshner, as well as our solicitor, Bob DeSanto, and she will be sending out an email to board members tomorrow. Keep in mind that Mr. Silva and myself conflict with the superintendent's search, but we will have an email sent out tomorrow stating what the next steps are, and I believe we will be having a meeting, a Zoom meeting set up for the 17th of December. So an email will be going out sometime this evening or tomorrow with that, and if anyone has any questions moving forward, you know the format for that. Thank you. At this time, do we have a motion for the approval of bills that occurred during October 2020?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa. Mrs. Cottisbadi.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva. Ms. Spinelli.
Yes.
Mr. English.
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you. We have no emerging items at this time. Do I have any board members that would like to address any old or new business this evening? Seeing none, at this time, we will start with our board member remarks. I will start to my right with Mr. Fiocchi.
I just want to congratulate Dr. Grucci on your upcoming retirement, and thank you for your four to six years of dedication to the district. I know you're definitely going to be missed, and I just want to wish everybody else a happy holiday and happy new year. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiocchi. Mr. Holmes.
Yes, congratulations to Dr. Grucci. I'll expound on that in the next six months. Happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Ms. Costa.
I would also like to take just a second to extend my thanks to Dr. Grucci. I can honestly say that she is truly, probably, one of the most selfless individuals I have ever met. She is truly remarkable and a role model for all of us. I'd also like to thank the members of central administration for all their hard work. I know that this has been a very difficult time for everyone, and everyone truly has gone above and beyond. A particular thanks to our many wonderful educators, guidance counselors, staff members that have been working so very much with our students in order to ensure that the transition from, well, actually, it hasn't really quite been a full transition, but essentially going from hybrid to online. I know that for some, it has been very difficult, and for others, they've embraced it, but all in all, I can say that I'm just so very proud of the outstanding work that is being done to ensure that all of our children, all of our students, continue receiving their education. It's just pretty remarkable. To our students, I'd like to say, you know, I know that virtual learning, for some, they really enjoy it. I know many that are actually really happy and adapting and doing very, very well. But I also know some students are struggling, and to those students, I tell them, just hold on a little longer. We too will get through this. And finally, I'd like to give a special thanks to our families, our parents. I know this has not been easy, having your children at home, many working, having two working parents or one parent, whatever the case may be, and also trying to help your children with their online education. I am sure, and I know, that it has been really a challenge, and you too. I am so proud of all the families that are working so very much with, in cooperation with teachers, to make this online experience a success for our students. And finally, I would like to wish everyone a very, very happy holiday. I encourage you to reflect on the things that really are important to you, such as family and health. And also, I ask that people take a look around in your communities and understand that there are many people suffering and hurting, and we can all be a blessing to others. So on that note, I wish you all much safety, health, and a very happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Spinelli.
Good evening. Firstly, I would like to congratulate Ms. Grucci on her retirement, and I do look forward to celebrating with her. Secondly, I want to thank all of the community who came out and supported me during my reelection on the school board, and also congratulate Cedric Holmes on being on the school board, and also congratulate Cedric Holmes on being reelected and welcoming Dennis Rivera. I wish everyone a happy holiday and a happy new year for 2021. I'm looking forward to what this year is to come and to bring my knowledge of healthcare and the services that I offer to the board during this pandemic. And I look forward to working with everyone again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spinelli. Mr. Silva?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to congratulate Dr. Gruccio on her upcoming retirement. I'd like to thank her for her leadership and her support and dedication to the district. I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Mr. Sabrana?
Congratulations, Dr. Gruccio, also to our new board members. This is one year I will be happy to see be over. It's been a struggle in so many ways, and there's been so much loss and so much suffering. But be that as it may, I hope everyone has a safe and happy holiday, and we can look forward to a much better 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sabrana. All the way to my left, Ms. Cottisbadi?
Dr. Gruccio, I'd like to echo Mr. English with both being happy for you and sad all in one. So I'm just going to leave it for now at congratulations on a well-deserved retirement come June. If anyone deserves it, you do. Thank you for everything that you have done and will continue to do, and I'm looking forward to celebrating with you and our board members in the district over the next six months, celebrating you. I'd like to thank Mr. Edwards, Mr. Elwell, and Complete Care for their special presentation and working with our district. I was very impressed, and I'm looking forward to getting over to the high school and actually seeing the program in action. To those of you who came to the podium tonight, thank you. You might not think that we do, but we do listen to everything that is said. I was happy to hear that some of our students are able to complete the community service that they need for certain groups that they're in or programs. I agree 100% or 150% that we need to start recognizing, like we used to, the great accomplishments and hard work that's coming from our staff and students. Just because we're virtual doesn't mean good things aren't happening. They definitely are. Mr. Rivera, congratulations once again on the election. I'm looking forward to working with you as our newly-elected board member. And again, congratulations to Ms. Spinelli and Mr. Cedric Holmes. To a man who has dedicated many years to our students and district, Mr. Alrich, I'm very sad that you will not be sitting on the board next year. Your knowledge and genuine caring ways for our district is going to be missed. However, if I know you, my friend, your voice will still be heard loud and clear. Thank you to everyone from our district staff to all of our parents and caregivers who have been going above and beyond to make sure our students are continuing to get the best possible education while still continuing to be safe. I'd like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. Please stay safe. I'm hoping the new year brings positive change for this pandemic, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Ms. Cottisbadi. Dr. Gruccio?
Thank you. First of all, thank you to all of you for your very kind comments. Dr. Rossi, thank you for your 25 "whereas's." I really appreciate it. This was the hardest letter I've ever written in my life. This has been my life for 46 years. I have never had a September where I did not walk into a Vineland Public School. So, you know, it's just difficult for me. I'm full of all different kinds of emotions. I'm excited, I'm sad. I just, I'm so grateful for all of you and the opportunity to work with so many wonderful people. I truly have been blessed, and I am grateful for all of you. I thank you for your kindness. And we still have six months to work together, so I'm going to soak up all I can in those six months because I don't know what I'm going to do in September. I might need counseling. Anyhow, I just want to wish everybody a very safe, healthy, and happy holiday. Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, whatever you celebrate. May you be safe, may you be happy, and may you be with your loved ones. Thank you all so very much again, and God bless you.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. Okay, as we're getting ready to close on our December meeting, the last one of the year, again, I'd like to thank the Complete Care Company again for making the investment in the Vineland Public School District. I look forward, as I said, to that partnership, and it is an honor for us to be partnered with them. I would also like to once again congratulate Mrs. Santos for her recognition. The election, I think, I think the results are finally in, right? Ms. Spinelli, we're official? That's it? The election is finally complete. So I would like to congratulate and welcome back Ms. Spinelli and Mr. Holmes. You guys are hard-working board members, and you know, we're getting right back into it come January, so congratulations. And again, I look forward to working with you next year. Mr. Rivera, you're going to be a new face on the board. We are a hard-working board that will answer a phone at any time, so if you have any questions, concerns, we're easy to get ahold of. We look forward to meeting you and working with you this coming January. I congratulate you. And to my friend, Tom Alrich, back in 2010, we were candidates on, for the first time, he was an incumbent, I was a first-time candidate running, and we were against each other very quickly through the power of that forum we used to do, which was a great thing we no longer do, unfortunately. That forum, I quickly learned that we weren't so different. We were a lot alike, other than just being bald. You were a mentor to me early on. You let me get my feet wet. You let me sometimes flounder and just about drown, but you let me speak my mind and helped me grow into the board member that I am today. You sat by my side as vice president. You were always there to talk me off the ledge. You continue to believe and fight for what you think is the right thing for our students and our taxpayers. A lot of times, it might not have been the best thing to say publicly or the popular thing to say, but you said it. And unfortunately, some people take things to heart, and it hurts their feelings, and it can get misconstrued. But it was truly a pleasure and an honor to work with you as a board member, but even more of a pleasure to be able to build a friendship and call you one of my good friends. You're going to have some freedom on your time, so I wish you nothing but the best with that. And as Ms. Cottisbadi said, I'm sure you will be texting us from time to time, letting us know that that was a good move or possibly not the best move. So again, best of luck to you. Enjoy your family and quality time, and I will see you around. Dr. Gruccio, all I can say, I said enough tonight, we've got six months still to go, so I don't want to speak about it all at once. I do want to say, it's not easy to walk in your shoes, and many people are quick to judge and say what they would have done or how they would have handled it. But until they truly sat in the seat and walked in those shoes, you know the job that it takes. I continue to talk about your open-door policy. That door is always open and will remain open while you're still here. So anybody that didn't take the opportunity over the last 46 years to stop by and maybe walk through that door that you happen to be on the other side of, I encourage them to stop and maybe get to know you over the next six months. As far as the year 2020 goes, my God, what a year. I can't wait for it to be done. I mean, we have had nothing but situation after situation. A pandemic that we thought would be over isn't over, and it's continuing to challenge us in several ways. We're blessed to have the right people in the right places to make all kinds of decisions here, so I can only hope that the rest of this school year can go as smooth as physically possible and mentally as well. And I thank all who are involved in the day-to-day operations of it from the beginning to the end. And you know, I've thanked each one of you enough, and I continue to thank you for your One quick thing I want to tuck on is the public recognition piece that Roxanne Durenza had mentioned this evening. We have been approached by a couple different organizations, and Dr. Grucci and I are definitely, we want to get back to that as well, as soon as possible. We have several departments that we'd like to recognize someone, so we have some ideas in place. We just have to try and get everything together during this crazy time. It might even require maybe having a monthly recognition meeting. That's strictly something to promote the positives and not the hoopla of, do we approve this or approve that, or not approve that or this? So that's definitely on our plate, the board's embracing that. So absolutely, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and thank you to Ms. Myerson as well, who also brought it to our attention in an email earlier this week, as well as the Transportation Committee, which they have been discussing as well. So definitely, we will definitely be doing things like that. With that being said, I do want to just close with a couple quick thoughts. To my fellow board members, once again, I was your president, and I want to thank each one of you for the extra efforts put in during these trying times. None of the decisions we've had to make the last 12 months have been easy, especially the last nine months. It was truly challenging. We all have opinions, and we all have to try and come out here and make sure that we are united as one. We've worked hard. We've come up with some of the best ideas possible. Unfortunately, there's the day-to-day operations that we all would love to try and run, but we know that we cannot run them, and we really aren't the educational professionals. But we do specialize in our own areas. So I do thank each one of you for putting the extra time in, in the effort, having the confidence in me to lead. I also know that come January, we have a reorganization meeting, and that's usually one of the more stressful times for board members because the decision to pick a new president, to nominate a vice president, I just would like to let you know, as I do every year, that I will definitely continue to like to lead this Board of Education if indeed I have your support. And I have been in conversation with Ms. Spinelli, who was our top vote getter, and last year, she had really expressed interest in wanting to be a board leader. And I've been in conversation with her, so just some food for thought over the next couple weeks. I would like to, again, lead as president, and if the board would like to think of Ms. Spinelli as the vice president, I would encourage everyone to think that way, and we'll see how it goes come reorganization meeting. But that's just me trying to take a little of the stress off yous and set the table already so we can get to work come January. And finally, I would like to take a moment to wish everyone a safe and healthy holiday season and also a blessed and safe new year. 2021 has got to be a lot different than this past year was in so many ways for us. So let's get recharged, re-energized, and bring our A-game back as we always do. I thank everyone once again, and at this time, I ask for a motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you and good evening. Board members, we will be doing our annual Christmas greeting now.